Time is 7:30, Monday, February 9th. I'd like to call this Board of Education meeting to order. I ask that we all please rise for the salute to the flag. I'm sorry, February 11th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mindy?
Mr. Lambert?
Here, President.
Ms. Pride?
Here.
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 Mr. Nardella?
President.
Mr. Nantucci?
Here.
And Albi?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Mr. Nardella?
Ms. Corrigan?
Here.
Thank you. Board members, you've received in your packet the Board of Education regular meeting minutes from January 29th, 2015. I'm assuming you've had a chance to review them. Make a motion on the minutes.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education approve of the minutes from January 29th, 2015, Board of Education's regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wilk. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain, Madam Chair.
That's one abstention. All in favor? We went through there. So moved. Thank you. Tonight, we're going to move forward with a very special part of our Board of Education meeting, one that we enjoy very much. It's a chance for us to recognize some very special students. The Watertown Board of Ed wishes to congratulate the following students from Swift Middle School for their January achievement of leadership by example. They are students who stand out among their peers in the classroom, in the school in general, and/or in activities in the community. They take the initiative, share their expertise with others, and model adult behavior, all while showing respect towards adults and towards their peers. When your name is called, please come and join our Superintendent, Dr. Carnemola. First, in grade six, we have Nick Mastrafrancesco. Also in sixth grade, Ryan Murphy. In seventh grade, Trista Mader. Also in seventh grade, Priscilla Massometo. In eighth grade, Jordan Portek. In eighth grade, Nick Petrazio. And also in eighth grade, Abby Baker. Congratulations to all of those Swift students. At this time, we'd also like to welcome a student from Judson.
We had someone who wasn't able to be here with us last time, but maybe wanted to come down tonight, as I understand, and his mom's birthday also. Congratulations to one of our Students of the Month in fifth grade from Delton Elementary School, a K O D E.
Again, congratulations to all of our students. At this time, the Watertown Board of Education wishes to congratulate Lindita Kula, Watertown High School Junior, for receiving the A I E P Host Family Global Citizens Award. This award grants its winner a $2,000 scholarship towards the cost of Watertown High School's spring trip to Greece. Lindita was chosen for her Watertown school spirit, interest in world cultures, and enthusiasm towards learning. We are so honored that Mr. David Guerrero has generously offered to make this an annual scholarship. Thank you, Mr. Guerrero, for your altruistic contributions to the students of Watertown High School. Please welcome award recipient Lindita Kula and its benefactor, Mr. Dave Guerrero.
I just have a few words. It's good to see everyone on the Board of Ed, and it's a lot of new faces, but good to see everyone tonight. My name is David Guerrero. On behalf of A I P Host Families, we're a local homestay organization out of Watertown that has over 140 Chinese students studying at about 30 private high schools throughout Connecticut, living with local American host families. Our mission is one of bringing diversity to our U.S. high schools, enabling a global experience in the classroom, and promoting friendship and understanding between our two great countries. Annually, A I P Host Families establishes scholarships and awards for deserving American high school students like Lindita, who embrace diversity, globalization, and tolerance in their classrooms. This evening, A I P Host Families would like to recognize Lindita Kula with a $2,000 award towards Watertown High School's annual abroad trip taking place in April 18th through April 26th this year to Athens, Greece. A few comments from Lindita's teachers. Lindita is a smart, hardworking, kind, and funny student. Her enthusiasm towards school makes everyone, staff, and students alike smile. Lindita would also like to attend the trip because she is Greek herself, and her grandma was born in Greece as well. Lindita, enjoy your trip to Greece, learn more about your culture, and share your once-in-a-lifetime memories that you will make with your friends, classmates, and family for many years to come. Congratulations.
Yes. This is not our home, but we love Swift. Now, we'll take a very brief recess for any group photos. If all of the Swift students could come up to the center, you'll get a group photo with Dr. Carnemola.
I also enjoyed the lovely artwork that lined the hallways of the main foyer. The art teacher, Mrs. Alwell, transformed the halls to look like a museum. At Polk, the PTO set up for the book fair in the Polk Library after school last Friday. Students visited throughout the week. A family fun night was held tonight as well. At Judson, Student Council is conducting a fundraiser to support Angela DeFeo. The Angels for Angela campaign asks students to purchase paper angels for 25 cents. Paper angels are on display in the cafeteria, and students wore green last Friday in support of Angela. The school leadership team presents the STARS program to faculty. STARS stands for Students, Staff, Teachers, Acting Responsible, Respectful, and Safe, and is Judson's new motto. It was presented to students this week. At Swift, the annual fundraiser began last week. A portion of the proceeds will be donated to the Angels for Angela Fund. Students can also choose to donate instead of receiving fundraising prizes. The staff also has fundraisers of their own, which support the American Heart Association and Read for Rich, a new organization that promotes literacy. At the high school, AP Parent Night will be held on the 18th to inform parents and students of the AP testing process. Almost 60% of the seniors have applied to college, and the Principals Advisory Committee met again last week to discuss flex structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karpinski. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Public Participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? Are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close our first round of public participation and move on to Item H, Committee Reports. Mr. Nardella, as Chair, do you have any reports from Curriculum and Instruction?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, I do. Prior to the regular Board of Education meeting tonight, the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee met, and we heard a presentation by our high school principal, Mr. Paul Jones, about the revisions to the Watertown High School Program of Studies for 2015-2016. In response to changes in state law, Watertown High School must increase the number of credits students need to earn in order to graduate. Other requirements include a senior capstone or demonstration project and the development of a student success plan beginning in middle school. The 2015-2016 Watertown High School Program of Studies contains a number of exciting new course offerings, particularly in math and science. Thank you to Mr. Jones and the high school administration for a very detailed and interesting presentation about next year's program of study.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Moving on to Policy and Labor, as Acting Chair, I can say that there are no updates this evening. Moving to Mr. Lambert for Budget and Finance Committee.
Yes, Madam Chair, the only thing we have is the upcoming presentation by Dr. Carnemola in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Again, back to you, Mr. Lambert, for Facilities and Operations.
No report at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And back to you, Mr. Nardella, anything from Governance and Community Engagement this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Going right back to you, Mr. Nardella, as our secretary, do you have any communications to share with the Board?
At this time, there are no communications, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nardella. Moving on to Item J, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report. Dr. Carnemola?
Thank you, Mrs. Craddy. First, I'd like to again mention that they're gone at this point, the majority of them, but we are recognizing Students of the Month and for their leadership activities and some of the other exciting things that our students are doing within their schools, but we've also been bringing them to the Board meetings as we did this evening so that they get the recognition from the community and the Board members. And I'm thankful that we had all of our students and their parents able to be here with us this evening. Also, I would like to ask Mr. Jones to come up to do the presentation for the Board, the full Board, and the public on the changes to the program of studies. As Mr. Nardella said, we did do this in a committee meeting before this meeting, but I ask also, Mr. Jones, to present to the full Board, and I, Board of Education members, you know that I also sent these changes home in your packet on Friday in preparation for tonight's meeting. I ask that you review, continue to review the program of studies after the meeting this evening and after Mr. Jones' presentation so that we may be able to vote on it at the upcoming Board meeting and enact it with Board approval. We are looking to do that quickly because we want to get students registered for courses, and we would want Board approval before we've made the changes to the program of studies. So we will consider this a first read this evening, if you will, and hopefully vote on this, these proposed changes at the February 23rd meeting. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Dr. Carnemola. Board members, thank you for letting me be here tonight and to speak to you about the proposed changes to the Watertown High School Program of Studies. This presentation will do two things. One, it will lay out a transition plan for us to raise both our credit number, but also certain credit requirements in our current program of studies over the course of the next two years so that we might meet current state legislation for the class of 2020. The other part of this will allow us to continue our reaccreditation process through NEASC, which will be here in October of 2016 for our formal reaccreditation visit. Our current program of studies requires 23 total credits for students who graduate from Watertown High School. Of those credits, you can see up here, and you have in your packet, the information about how that breakdown occurs. One thing to note is the seven and a half credits as electives. Some of the changes that we're proposing only change the wording of what those courses may be, so something to think about as we go through the presentation. Our proposal is over a two-year period to help ease the transition between personnel, between schedule, and between needed classes and graduation requirements over the process of two years. The first big change for the class of 2019, the current eighth graders, would be to add a half credit of science. The current Connecticut State statute says that by the class of 2020, we need to be at three science credits required. Currently, we are at two. We would add a half credit next school year in order to change that and to get to three by the class of 2020. The other changes for next year, the other big one, would be the two credits of world language. Currently, our students are reaching this. This is more of a change in wording, and we'll get into some of that as we go along. The big change the next year would be adding that extra half credit of science as well as a credit of math. Currently, we require students to have three maths in order to graduate. This would take us to four, which meets the requirements based on the Connecticut State statutes. So now, we're going to break down what each of those things are that we're asking, we're looking at adding. Currently, our seniors are piloting the capstone project as a pass fell type expectation for seniors. This would add it as an actual graduation requirement that they would earn one credit for, and we would start this next year. Our current seniors all have a plan in place to complete this project, so we do not see it as something that would be a challenge moving forward. This also factors in their current requirement to do community service hours because there are hours that would be factored into this and meet the civic expectation that our students would need to meet. Physical education and health does not change on credit requirements. There still would be one credit required of PE and half a credit required of health. The change is how we would do it. The freshmen would take a quarter credit of PE. The sophomores would continue to take a half credit of PE in order to prepare for the fitness test, and the juniors would take a quarter credit of PE. That would back into what we are proposing adding, which is a counselor workshop. One thing we've heard from teachers, from counselors, and from students and parents is that our freshmen coming in need more preparation on how high school works. What do credits mean? What are graduation requirements? What is high school? The other part that we've heard a lot about is our juniors, who, and more hearing it from seniors, who do not feel that they're ready for that college application process and wish they had had more information given in their junior year. So, the idea is that we would begin offering taught by our counselors a quarter credit of counselor workshop to ninth graders and to 11th graders. So, if you had 200 freshmen, their first semester in high school, they would take that first quarter, 100 of those freshmen would take counselor workshop, the other 100 would take a PE. They would then flop that in the second quarter, so the 100 would take the other course. The second semester of the year would be for juniors, so they would take a quarter of a PE, and they would take the quarter of counselor workshop, and then do the second part in the second year, in the second half of that semester. It was easier before to explain it with the 200. Obviously, there would be some numbers that would change and make it up or down. This would basically impact our PE in that it would take out some of the elective choices that we have. We would still have the opportunity to offer some elective PE's such as weightlifting and fit-for-life for seniors who wanted to take that and use that as an elective. However, there wouldn't be as many opportunities because courses would be tied up for PE teachers in that freshman and that junior PE. They would then get their one year, their one credit of PE between the freshman, sophomore, and junior year, and it builds in a counselor workshop that is much needed. It's much like what some of our counselors do at Swift, and it also is a great opportunity for our counselors to get more face time with their caseload of students to do both of those two parts, transition them both in the high school, and then help them transition as they're moving into their senior year when they think they know it all going into that year, and they could really use that support in college applications and things that hit them so quickly at the beginning of fresh, or beginning of senior year, and they need to know with application deadlines and college expectations. The next change would be science, where we would be adding, over the course of two years, a half credit each year. Those two additions would get us to the three required. The three semester courses that we are proposing adding are forensics, marine biology, and astronomy. We have current staff that are certified to teach these courses, and in some cases have even taught these courses in the past. The idea would be it gives juniors and seniors mostly a chance to have more options in science. So if you have a student who has, would have only taken two sciences and stopped biology, it gives them some other semester courses that they could take that are a little different than what we're already offering with physics or chemistry. World languages. This change is more in wording than it is in reality. Our students for the past three years have averaged over, earning over two credits of world language each year. Last year, the graduating class only had eight students that did not earn two credits of world language. Therefore, when you look at what our current program of studies is, the seven electives that they were required to earn, they're already earning these two within that envelope. We just have to require it with the new Connecticut State statute. Math. This would be for the class of 2020, and we'd be adding a full credit of math. We would do the same thing that we would do with science, where we would be adding some half-credit courses for seniors and juniors who could take as they've gone through, and they've already got, taken Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Another change with math would be requiring, in the program of studies, all students to take a personal finance course. In the public act that I provided for all the Board members, one of the big recommendations is that all high school seniors take some kind of personal finance class where they're learning how to do some of the things that have been lost sometimes with all of the online world that we live in, like budgeting, like preparing a budget, like balancing checkbooks and things that we've kind of lost. In that personal finance note, this would be a requirement that they would have to earn a half credit of personal finance. We currently offer this course as a technology elective. It's currently being taught that way, and it would continue to be taught that way. However, students would also have the option of earning it as a math credit as long as it's taught by a math teacher. Some of our students are going to earn four maths no matter what because they want to go on and take calculus and all of that. I was not a math person, so I would be one of the students who would have probably chosen to take this as half of my fourth math credit grouped with one of those other half-credit courses we proposed so that I could get all of my four math credits in and also take care of this requirement. Where do we go from here with these proposed changes? We have a plan to transition over the course of the next two years, and we have a way that we can meet the need for NEASC reaccreditation. One of the things that they're going to look for when they come in is the entirety of our program of studies and making sure that we have a plan, and we have a plan in place, not just for our current students, but also for our graduating classes that are coming up in the next four to five years, and that's part of the NEASC reaccreditation process. At this time, do you have any questions?
How's the alternative education area involved in this? Is it a requirement for them also?
Yes, so when you look back at here, there's still the six and a half elective credits that they would take that would include all of that. Part of offering more half-year credits for math and science actually allows more students to take a half-year elective, so to take a graphic arts, to take a woods, to take a metals, because they're only taking it for half a year. So if we had added, if we tried to add full-year credits, they wouldn't have that availability. But that's the, all of the courses we were trying to add are either quarter or half-year credits so that we can get more students into some different and varied electives as well, including art, music, and all of those type courses as well. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Board members all have the updated powerpoint from this evening?
Yes. Just want to be sure. Okay. I want to start this evening by talking about the difference in approach that my team and I have taken to developing the budget this year, and spending a little bit of time talking about the budget process and how we came to put this together to be here this evening. Firstly, I say that the budget process began much earlier with the idea that we were going to approach it in a different way, and to some degree, I actually mean that that started the first day that I took the job as Superintendent in Watertown in July because, as many of you remember, the first thing I needed to do when I took the job was to reduce the budget for the current year that we are in. And therefore, from the beginning, I was looking very closely at a budget and having to go through a budget line by line to determine where we stood currently and what our needs were. So, in reality, to some degree, developing the budget for this year, this coming year, started in the current year. And then, starting in September, actually, we began to meet with our building administrators, who I call the Cabinet and I. The Cabinet being Mrs. Brown, the Business Manager, Mrs. Brockchester, the Special Student Services Director, Ms. Parlato, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Senacola, the Facilities Manager. And I started to sit and talk about where to take the budget this year based on needs. We asked our administrators to put together the needs for their buildings, our department coordinators to put together the needs for their departments, and to bring them back to me and to the Cabinet for review. And all along the way, what was governing our process was answering the "what is the ideal Watertown Public Schools?" question. And you have heard me talk about this when I talk about setting goals for the district. This is the question that we ask and that drives the work that we do every day. So, basically, I said to the administrators and to the rest of the Cabinet, if we are going to build a budget that is going to help us get to be that much closer to the ideal Watertown Public Schools in this school year, what does that budget look like? So, we drafted our improvement plan. We did that during administrative and board retreats. We brought the plan to a joint session of the Board of Education, approved that plan, so it became the district plan. And that plan that we've focused on all year thus far became the driving force for developing the budget. So I point this out because this would have been the norm, what I'll call the continuation budget strategy. And that is basically the strategy of taking the current budget and rolling it over, and looking at your fixed costs and trying to determine how you move forward from the fixed costs. And as you can see, some of the fixed costs that every district faces, these are some of the increases that we were looking at this year as we attempted to move last year's budget into this year. Staff salaries, of course, are fixed costs. We need to have teachers to teach students, and this increase is the amount of increase in staff salaries due to contract increases and so on. Our workers' compensation costs have gone up. A certain segment of our special education services has gone up. I want to be clear about that. This does not mean the entire special education budget is up 62%, but it does mean that a portion of our budget of required services for students is up 62%. And I will talk a little bit more about that later. But in short, it's primarily due to some of the programs we've put into place that are necessary for our students with autism. And you may remember from some of our, in earlier board meeting, we were talking about the growing numbers of them in our district. Pupil transportation as a whole has gone up. Our bus contracts, fuel, and so on, diesel fuel has gone up, and so our contracts have risen. Our tuition costs have gone up. Our tuition costs are the dollars that we have to pay to other schools for special education placements, for example. They have raised tuition payments, and we have had a few more students that have needed to be placed in other facilities, and that has caused that line item to go up. And our utilities in our building, heat, lights, the general utilities have gone up by nearly 11% also. So I say these are fixed costs because, as you see, these are the things that, no matter what, we have to pay for. We have to, we have to pay staff, we have to turn the lights on, we have to run the heat, and we need to provide the required services for our special education students. So we looked at these and said, well, we're going to definitely have to dig down and do work to get to where we are trying to get when we are facing some fixed costs that have increased this much. So, we embarked on a different strategy. Basically, three steps to it. I'm first going to talk about the first two. First of all, we've made a collective decision that we would use our funds most efficiently to be able to impact student achievement. And that also means connecting our expenditures explicitly to our priorities. So again, going back to that, what is the ideal Watertown Public Schools, and what are our goals, and how do we connect how we spend our money to what our goals are? So if we're talking about connecting our expenditures to our priorities, I have to take us back to our strategic goals for this. take us back to our strategic goals for this year. And our first two, of course, are in teaching and learning. And we're talking about literacy and math primarily here, although problem solving goes across the board and literacy goes across the board. We're talking about students who are able to read and write and speak fluently and effectively. We're talking about students who are able to solve problems and to think critically across the board, but including in math and science. And our systems, and we've talked a lot about this, our two goals in systems were number one, to do what we have been doing for months that brings me here tonight with this presentation, which is to create a comprehensive budget that ensures that we're using our resources wisely and to meet the needs of all of our students first and foremost. And also, that we are providing for the effective care of our facilities. And I'll speak more about that later on. But generally speaking, we have five beautiful buildings and we want to make sure they stay that way. And that has been a district goal. Of course, our school and district culture, providing a safe environment for our students, and also communication, trying to engage in two-way communication with all people in our community, parents, students, business owners, community members. These are the priorities that you'll see we've tried to connect all of our expenditures to. That was number one. And number two, how should we spend our money? Number three, go back to the idea of fixed costs and some of the increases. If we're going to be able to do all of those things, we also have to look for savings. And so my goal throughout this process was, how do I look for overall cost savings? Not just this year, but in the long run. And some of that started already in this 14, 15 year. And you'll see that, that some of the changes that we've made in the fiscal year we're living in are going to carry us forward in 2015, 16, and beyond because they're long-term solutions to budget issues. For example, we are in the process of implementing health savings accounts in all bargaining unit contracts. This is a tremendous saver of money in the benefits for the district. And it has to be done through collective bargaining. So as we negotiate new contracts, each contract that we are negotiating, we are bringing HSAs to. We have looked very closely at our contracted services, and I'll speak a little bit more about that later. But suffice it to say that in many cases, we found that we are overpaying for services to people outside of our district when we could have better services if we paid for them within our district. We considered some transportation options and made some changes already this year. You can, you saw this in an earlier board meeting. We purchased two vans and we, for student transportation, I should say, we leased two vans for student transportation and we purchased two new plow trucks. And in the end, we actually saved money in doing that. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. We've enacted what I'll call very simple energy-saving strategies. And these are the kind of strategies you employ at home to reduce your costs also. Turning the thermostat down, keeping the heat at 68 degrees in the buildings. We're ensuring that all of the computers and monitors, they're on timers, they all turn off now at a certain time at the end of the day, so they're not left running and taking up power when we are gone for long weekends. This weekend being an example of that. The majority of the appliances and electronics in the buildings that can be unplugged are unplugged, for example. These are just some of the cost-saving measures that we've employed moving forward. We've looked in ensuring that appliances such as space heaters, the little portable kinds of heaters weren't being used because they throw off the building. HVAC systems, for example, and that costs us more money because someone is trying to warm a room and in reality, they're cooling the room because it's getting too far ahead of temperature and now the air conditioning would kick on in areas where there's air We are in the process of installing what is called a co-gen unit in the pool area. I'll explain that a little bit more. We have reconfigured the use of staff everywhere that we could, and I'll give you some examples of that. When we have had some of our paraprofessionals retire this year, some of them we have not replaced because we went back to student plans and looked at how we might be able to rework people's schedules to change where they were and to change what students they were servicing, and we've still met the student needs. We are looking at reconfiguring some of our staff within our buildings. Again, an example of that, in this current school year, we were in dire need of another teacher to reduce fifth grade class sizes at Judson and we were able to move a teacher from Swift to Judson to meet that need because that particular class had been larger than all of the others. So we looked at student schedules. We continue to look at student schedules. We're looking at building schedules at the middle school and high school, making sure we're using our staff effectively. That's some of the way we're reconfiguring the staff. And also, this, this last one, streaming our HR, human resources systems. Right now, I can't put a dollar amount on that. What I can tell you is that we are becoming more efficient as an entire district in the way that we hire people, in the way that we process payroll. We have, for just an example of that, we are moving toward bi-weekly payments for all of our employees. And it sounds kind of like, well, why don't we have that already? It's just not the way that it is. There are many of our union contracts, for example, that require people to be paid on a weekly basis. We have people that are paid bi-weekly, but some are on, they're getting paid this week for two weeks and some are getting paid next week for two weeks. And all of that takes a lot of time and energy away from other things in our offices. So we have been working through, again, through the collective bargaining and contracts and so on to streamline some of that, to make sure that our hiring follows a process, our online systems are up to date, it's all wanted to do with hiring. That's a lot of what we've been doing on the business end to try to maintain new systems. As I mentioned already, health savings account, they're an alternative approach. Our employees are happy with them at this point also. It's not something that we've, we've had an issue. Sometimes in our, as we're doing negotiations, it can be an issue until people truly understand the way that it works. And then 95% of the time, people are coming back and saying, well, I'm glad I did this. This has really been helpful. So it helps the employees to afford their medical needs and it helps the district to reduce our liability and benefits. Again, I mentioned the truck purchase and the transportation savings. This is after paying the leases and the insurance and the drivers. We're still saving more than $61,000 a year by buying, by leasing those vehicles because we have reduced the amount we have to pay to transportation services to take our kids out of district. Also, I'm sure, as many of you know, we have very actively pursued grant dollars this year so far in the district. Of course, the security grant being one, but also at this point, we had, we were awarded another almost $47,000 for computers here at Swift. This, these were mini-grants given to teachers to replace some computers for teachers here at Swift. And I want to go back one moment. The co-gen unit, this is a unit in our pool area at the high school and we don't pay for the unit. We don't pay for the installation of the unit. The company, this is green energy savings, the company that installs it, and we've had one here in the past, we're getting a new one. The company that installs it puts the unit in for free because they get the rebate from the federal government. And in turn, we save the energy dollars. So if you've been at any swim meet, you know how hot it is in those stands and by the pool, the air coming up, the heat coming out of the pool. This takes the, the heat out of the air in the pool area and recycles it back in to help heat the pool. So that is, it's a, it's a large pool, it's a large body of water to keep warm enough for the students, and we are really reducing the energy costs associated with the pool by using this air to heat the pool. So we look to connect our expenditures to our priorities and we look to somehow save money at the same time. So as we came together to review these requests, and I want to be clear on this because these weren't wish lists. The administrators and the department coordinators didn't bring me, I didn't say to them, whatever you want, if everything was totally perfect for you in your building, what would your budget look like? Bring me that. I said to them, don't bring me wish lists. Bring me what you believe, you and your faculty, you and your department coordinators, the athletic directors, you bring me what you believe is essential for you to run your building and for you to make progress toward your building and our district goals. And that's what they brought me. And as we sat and went through those initial budget requests, a lot of what I would call the cuts were done while they sat with me for two or three hours and went through their requests. Because as we went through line by line, I stopped and said, tell me why you need that. How is that going to be helpful? And we had conversations about it. And just by doing that with the five schools, the administration from the five schools, the facilities manager, the athletic directors, we cut a million dollars from their requests as we went through that process. And it isn't that they didn't need me, need everything they brought me. It's that we said, again, we're working within limits of a budget. We want to put together a budget that's fiscally responsible. That said, let's prioritize. If we had just taken all the requests, rolled the budget over, fixed costs, taken all the requests and brought it here tonight, we'd be at almost 6%. And clearly, that's not a, that's not a workable budget. That's, it's not a workable budget for the town. That's, that's not a workable budget for the taxpayers. I can't bring a 6% budget. I need, and we all knew that. So just to give you, these are just some examples. I just wanted to give you some of the examples of things that, when I say we cut nearly a million dollars off the top in those meetings, these are some of the things we took out that were in the original budget. If you look at this, I think without a lot of explanation, you can see how the majority of these, if not all of these, are tied directly back to our priorities. We are looking to increase student achievement in math, in science, and in literacy. And certainly, we have some work to do with technology and integrating it into our classrooms. I'll explain all of these in a little more detail because some of what's here, even though these specifics are gone, there are still things in this budget that are related to each one of these. It was just, how do we get what we need without paying quite as much as some of what is on the screen in front of you? So this is, that's, those are the teaching and learning cuts we made from the get-go. This is what we left. And one of the things that I, I want to make clear is, I don't call these additions. I don't call these additions to the budget. I call them changes to the budget. Because as I've said, we made changes. There are some things that are here that were not here before, clearly, but we reduced costs in many cases so that we could pay for these. I will go through every one of these and why we are still doing what's on this list. You see, actually, one of them is a reduction, for example. At the high school, that minus half, that is a, that is a reduction in staff. Kindergarten, with the current class sizes in kindergarten, we were talking about adding a kindergarten teacher in to John Trumbull. Because every class, kindergarten class at John Trumbull at this point is at 21 or 22 students. As you all know, I'm out there a lot. I'm in these classrooms. I see what it means to have 21 and 22 five-year-olds in a class with one teacher. And it's a difficult feat. They're doing great work, but 21 and 22 kindergartners is too big in a kindergarten class, number one. Number two, I have been driving them crazy at John Trumbull every day. Some of them are here tonight, probably shaking their heads. I have called every day, at least once a day during kindergarten registration, said, how many have registered? How many have registered? Trying to make sure that I'm preparing us for the budget and for next year. And what I can tell you is that as of today, we have 127 kindergartners registered for next school year. That is 25 more than were registered at the same time when kindergarten registration was over last year. I've also done the research so I know, what do we all know? We hold kindergarten registration now, but when do a lot of people come to register? In the middle of the summer and after school starts. So I went back five years with the records at John Trumbull to try to figure out how many more people on the average register for kindergarten between now and after school starts, the first week of school at John Trumbull. And I found that the minimum number is 60 that will typically register between now and when school starts. And the max that we've seen is 80. Last year, it was 70. The year before, it was 80. So with 127 right now, if I tack even the back end on that and say, maybe only 60 more will register, we will still have classes sizes 22 and 23. This is the reason for a kindergarten teacher. At Judson, in third grade, we will be at 24 students. That is easy for me to tell because I look in the database and I know who's going from John Trumbull to Judson. And that's not counting anybody else coming and registering. And we've had a number of registrations K through five so far this year in the district. At Judson, I believe we had nine students register between the beginning of school and now, for example, in grades three through five. So that's a, that's a, that's a real number. That's students that are truly coming from John Trumbull to Judson. Our class sizes at Polk in the same grade are 18 or 19. So you see why I'm looking to add a third grade teacher in so that we have class sizes that are similar in both schools. And also, I just want to take a moment to talk a little bit about why I feel strongly in reducing the class sizes in K to five. And I'm not going to read what's on screen to you, but give you some bullets. If you look on the top, one of the things that we know from the research about K to five is that all students benefit from lower class sizes. It isn't the low achievers that only benefit from lower class sizes or the kids that are doing fairly well, they're, they're average, they're performing at an average level. It's all kids. Kids who are low performers, kids who are high performers, they all benefit from having a smaller class size in K to five. It is also the one intervention that research shows makes a difference in achievement in K to five. One of these that, that always speaks to me that I'd like to point out, if you, the top one here. In, in K to five, students who are enrolled in classes over 20 students, students more than 20, for five or six years, by the end of sixth grade, they've lost an additional five months of learning. That's half a school year. So if you look at what I'm trying to do in K to five and reducing class sizes, I'm not really getting us under 20. I at least want to get us closer to 20. And in some cases, we may be at 19, we may be at 18. It also, if you think about the long-term effects of it, I find this very interesting and research has shown this over and over. Students who are in classes with lower sizes, the 15 to 17 student range, and on the higher end, again, not above 20, are 80% more likely to graduate from high school. There's a direct correlation between how many students we put in classrooms when they are that young and whether or not they're going to graduate high school 10 years later. And I think that's important to tie back to our priorities because we are talking about producing students who are literate, who are critical thinkers and problem solvers. In other words, we're teaching them how to read, how to write, and how to do basic math, where? In K to five. And if they're leaving us in fifth grade to go to sixth grade without those skills definitively under their belt, if they're, if they're leaving us without those skills, we have a problem moving them forward. At Judson, I'll be perfectly honest with you, if I wasn't trying to keep the budget down where I'm trying to keep it, this would be a full-time special education teacher at Judson. We really need a full-time teacher. I'm asking to put a half-time teacher at Judson because that's an absolute necessity. A 16% increase in the number of students that have, are designated as special education in a school as small as Judson is a lot. And it's not only the numbers that will be on the caseloads of these instructors, it's the needs. And when talking about special education, you have to think not only about the number of students that people are managing, but the kinds of interventions that those particular students need. Some students that have special education needs, need very little intervention. They just need some strategies and a little They just need some strategies and a little bit of intervention. And some come to us with very serious needs, especially in these lower-grade levels. You heard Mr. Jones speak about the changes to the program of studies. This is one of the reasons for the high school science teacher. But in actuality, this has been in the budget several times already, including when I was the high school principal, and we have cut it each year. We've continued to attempt to make do, even if we didn't change the science requirements the way we need to, as Mr. Jones presented this evening. With the number of students in science classes that currently exist, we really can't make use of the labs in the way that they were designed. The labs at Water, science labs at Watertown High School are beautiful. They are state-of-the-art, top-notch equipment. That's the way the building was built. And the problem is that when you have a science class that has 25 or 26 students in it, the lab stations weren't built for 25 or 26 students, number one. Number two, they are high school students, but they still need supervision when they're using gas, chemicals, and doing the types of experiments that they are doing in these labs. Science classes are a place at the high school that certainly class sizes need to be reduced a little bit. As you see, I'm talking about a reduction from the guidance department at Watertown High School. And this is no reflection on the work that that counseling department does at Watertown High School, because certainly I know the work that is done in the counseling department. I worked at the high school. But I'm thinking about two things as we do this. And Mr. Jones and I have talked at length about this particular recommendation for reduction. Number one, Naviance, so that everyone understands what that is, is the computer-based system that students do applications for college, they do applications for scholarships, their transcripts are loaded through there. The work that would have been done on paper years ago is now done through Naviance. You still need people to oversee it. You need the counselors, you need the secretaries, you need the administrators, you need parents to oversee what is going into Naviance and to make sure that students are doing what they need to do with it. But there's not as much work involved in the actual paperwork. That has been reduced by this system, number one. Number two, of course, I'm considering our enrollment, as I make all of these decisions tonight. You can see that our enrollment is up in certain grades, hence needing a kindergarten teacher and a grade-three teacher. And the move I had to make already for a fifth-grade teacher, but on the flip side of that, I was able to spare a teacher at Swift, for example, because we were able to make class sizes still work there. Likewise, in this current four years, and the class we see coming from Swift, the class coming from Swift is actually a very large eighth-grade class, to be honest, but we're at a point in the high school fluctuation where some of our upperclassmen, those classes are smaller than they've been in some previous years. And this is just the way it is. Some classes are larger than others as they come through. And so, in two years, may I, might I be standing here and saying, "I need to increase this half-time counselor back to a full-time counselor?" I might be standing here doing that. That's not because we haven't thought about long-term effects, it's because for the time being, I know that we can do this. Mr. Jones knows that we can do this. And frankly, it's not affecting an actual person that works for us because we had a resignation in the counseling department. So we are actually down to four counselors right now. And instead of rehiring another full-time person, we will put in a half-time person. So we're saving the money on it being half-time, and also the salary difference because the person that resigned had been here for some years. So we're going to save by hiring on the lower end of the scale. It isn't a secret that across the district, we're not doing as well as we would like to do in math. And all of the work that we are doing, we still need to do more. And again, you see, you see a little bit different here. Here, we're talking about K to 6. And the reason for that is, not only so that we get the building blocks right from K to 5, that this person helps us build the curriculum for grades K to 5, we're working on that already, but not at, frankly, not at a rate that is going to bring us the change in the way that we need it to, by using our own teachers who are also teaching and trying to put together new curriculum, try to implement new teaching strategies, try to implement Common Core. In many cases, teachers learning how to teach math in a new way themselves. We're doing this in very much baby steps right now. Bringing in some outside professional development, Ms. Parlato working with people, the administrators working, the teachers working together. We want to do more. So this person would be there mostly for the teachers. This is a person who will go in, model lessons, help teachers implement new teaching strategies, help us write the math curriculum, help us ensure that we're bridging that gap between fifth grade and sixth grade. That's where we will focus for the time being. Moving forward, once we have these ducks in a row, if you will, then we will be talking about 7 through 12. But this is where we're starting. And if you look back to some of the initial cuts I made from the budgets, you see, you would have seen there was a supervisor of mathematics curriculum, K to 12. That would have been lovely, but I can't afford that. So we're going here, and we're going to implement it from K to 6 first, and then move forward. These tutors we're already utilizing at Polk, it is working very well. These are certified teachers. They're not full-time teachers for us. That's why they're called tutors. In a lot of cases, they are, they're recent graduates, sometimes they're retirees. They are certified teachers, though, that are working in small groups with students. And they're doing what we would call targeted instruction to increase skills in literacy and in math. We're already doing it at Polk. We will continue doing it at Polk because I'm utilizing federal grant dollars to do it at Polk. I don't have the same federal grant dollars to do it at Judson, and I want to do it at Judson. One, because it's working at Polk. And two, because we have two, three-to-five schools, the opportunities that we provide at both of those schools should be as similar as possible. We want two schools that when those fifth graders leave and they go to sixth grade, they're all prepared in the same way. So again, these are minimal costs. These are hourly people that are coming in. This, if you've been at any of these budget presentations for the past few years, you've seen in every one. The first thing I want to say about adding in the social worker, before we even get into why we need one, is the fact that I mentioned in an earlier slide that we were looking for overall cost savings. And one of the ways we were looking to reduce our costs was by reducing the amount of contracted services. In our current budget, and for the past at least two years that I can remember, more than that, I'm thinking about my own time at the high school, we have paid an individual to come and do counseling, a school psychologist to come and do counseling at the high school for three days a week. And we've had to do that. We've had to contract that service because we don't have a position. We have one school psychologist at the high school. And we have students who have educational needs and plans that require hours of counseling. There aren't enough hours in the school day for the one person who is there to meet the needs of those students. So what have we been doing for years? We have been paying an outside agency to send in a school psychologist three days a week. And that is costing the district $77,000 this year. Why would we pay someone from the outside to come in three days a week for $77,000 when I can pay one of our own people to be here five days a week for probably around $60,000? So let me make the connection between why I'm talking about a school psychologist and a social worker. First of all, a social worker can do much of the same non-clinical counseling that a school psychologist can do. So they can lessen the burden there for some of the hours that we're contracting on the, from the service on the outside, one, and still meet the needs of the students. Two, they'll bring us the services that a social worker brings us instead of a school I want to point out that the data that I have up here is what I was able to get. Anyone who works in a school knows that a lot of these things go undocumented. These are the items that we have documented in the school so far this year that I was able to share. Let me explain a few of the terms. A crisis intervention can take many forms. A crisis intervention could be a student who has a very serious issue with another student, a student who has a very serious issue with a parent, a student who suddenly doesn't have housing. It's a student who's in crisis, in one way or another. 211 is a service that, it's a free service that's provided throughout the state of Connecticut. It's funded primarily through the United Way. You can, a lot of you know this, you can go home tonight, pick up the phone, and you can ask where a good daycare is of 211. You can pick it up if you need heating assistance, and they will assist you in where to go for heating assistance. When we call 211 from a school, the majority of times that we do that, it's, again, because we have a student in crisis, but it's a student in crisis who doesn't need DCF intervention, for example. It's a student who, more often than not, needs intervention for, and hospitalization, sometimes for psychiatric issues, for other interventions, again, that is a student in the kind of crisis that they need help right then. And that requires often an ambulance to be sent to a building, counselors to be sent to a building, and that I have documented, we have 20 of those so far this school year. We have 64 students who receive counseling, again, that they're entitled to from their educational plans and that they need through Wellmore Services. That is an outside agency that we are contracting. That we are paying through with grant money. So that's actually not costing the district anything right now. But when that grant runs out, those 64 kids still need the counseling. Sorry. And we need to have someone in place to give them the counseling. 190 students, we got this number from our social services department in Watertown, this is any number of things. Again, students are reporting that they don't have clothes to wear, they need food at home. Usually, this is an issue that requires intervention from social services because there's a family issue. And again, I don't mean a abuse or neglect situation. Those are DCF calls. It's not what I'm talking about here tonight. I'm talking about they need assistance in one way or another. They don't have, again, a student who tells us that they don't have heat at home, that they have needs that social services can help them meet. We've referred 190 students to social services. Again, I already mentioned, this social worker is actually going to save us money. This is a big one. This is hard for me to even underscore how important this position is to us. We have antiquated technology, which I'll deal with in a moment, but we also have a lot of good technology. We have iPads. We have some Chromebooks. We have some of the computers that have been gotten through the mini-grants. We have all sorts of educational software for students to use. What we don't have is someone to oversee it being implemented properly and to assist teachers to implement the technology. And in 2015, most of our learning is done with some kind of technology. Ms. Parlato, as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, spends some of her time trying to do this now because, of course, it's related to curriculum and instruction. I spend some of my time attempting to do this because there isn't anyone else. And the bottom line is, if we are going to have the technology in the buildings that we can't implement properly and that we can't assist teachers in implementing, it's not worth having and spending the money on because, to some degree, it's not being used for the purposes it was designed. So this is partially, this position is partially about that. The rest of it is, and again, this is, if you go back to the slides, you'll see I had a technology integration specialist, because in reality, you can probably break this job into two. I'm working within the confines of this budget. This person's got a big job to do. This is a combination. Let's coach teachers, let's develop programs, let's stay ahead of the technology curve instead of working at implementing technology that's now five years old because we're still trying to integrate what we already had. Let's stay ahead of the curve, let's put that into our curriculum. That, this person would work very closely with Janet in doing that, and they would also work closely in classrooms and with library-media specialists. The other hand, many board meetings ago, I mentioned the fact that we, there's one grant this year that we applied for that we did not get any money for, and it was a special education grant. And you can see with the cost of special education services, why we would be looking to try to supplement through grant funds. The primary reason we didn't get that grant was because we couldn't provide data to the state that the state needed to approve it. Because currently, there is no one person in this district that oversees all of our data, our assessment data, our attendance data, our demographic data, our databases of student information. All of it is done piecemeal, mostly by whichever secretaries in whichever buildings enter whatever piece of information they enter. Without oversight and procedures, that data is not maintained properly. One thing in one building being inputted doesn't look the same as in another building. And we are constantly working, as we try to apply for these grants, at cleaning up that data, for example. Naviance, Infinite Campus, our student database, blackboard calls that you get from me about the weather, Infinite Visions is our software for doing the budget, for example, and paying the bills. Those are just a few examples. There is nothing we do in 2015 that doesn't require technology and data. And I need to make sure, from the system's perspective, that this is, has oversight. And that when I need a report run for state government purposes, for federal grant dollars, for attendance of a student, you name it, I have to know that when we push the button to get that report, the data is accurate. I don't know that today. We are continually working at making sure. Another thing, I want to connect, to connect this back, you see how this one is related to pretty much every priority we have. We're talking about teaching and learning and technology. We're talking about having systems in place that support the school district to run efficiently. And we're talking about school climate and having a safe and positive environment. Because with the technology upgrades that come along with the securities grant, I also need someone who can manage that. And I'll give you an example of that. We're putting in all of these cameras, we're putting in all, in all the buildings that don't exist. We need people to make sure that all of that is still running. That would be someone working along with a facilities manager, but there are, there's software involved in the camera systems and the remote software from the police department that we will be running. Likewise, the key cards. Every one of our buildings, as we move forward, we will be using key cards to get in and out. Most of our buildings have had this capability for years, and we haven't used it. And the reason we haven't used it is because we haven't had anybody to manage the technology to give people the access. What I mean by that is, it's a blessing and a curse. The great part of key cards is, if something happens and I don't want this person to have access to the building anymore, when someone manages the access, their access is turned off immediately. This is, this is a person, I can call at 2:00 in the morning and say, "So-and-so's card needs to be turned off." So-and-so lost their grand master card, someone like me who gets into all of the buildings. That's imperative, that I have someone who works with us to manage all of those systems. And again, it's an example of where the key cards and the security upgrades in the long run are also going to save us money. Because if someone loses a grand master key at Watertown High School, I have to rekey that whole building if I want to make sure it stays safe. That's tens of thousands of dollars to rekey every building, every door in that building. Moving on with the technology. Last year, we cut $200,000. I shouldn't say we. I shouldn't say we, because I didn't. Last year, $200,000 was cut from the budget during one of the first go rounds, and that was to replace very aging equipment. Just about half of our computers in our system are six-plus years old. In computer years, it's like dinosaur age. This is another example where we can't effectively implement what we have because our computer systems can't even run the software, both educational software and the system software that we use. I'll give you an example of this. Infinite Campus, I mentioned, that's our student database information. Everything about every student in this entire district is an infinite campus. Their transcripts, their grades, their home information, their demographics, you name it, it is an infinite campus. We're operating with such an old version of infinite campus that there's no more support on it. So anytime we have an issue and something's not working, it's like having Windows XP at home. It's over. There's no, there's no support because we can't upgrade it. One, we haven't had the money to do the upgrades on the actual software, but even if we did, the computers that we are using can't handle the updated software. All of the computers at Monson House, for example, can't handle the upgrade. And we can't upgrade software that is the database that we use and not be able to use it. So we've had to leave it. So here's where we're trying to save money. We've put in for a technology grant. I actually just signed off on that today. I'm very hopeful that even if we didn't get the amount we've asked for, which is $325,410, we would get most of it, or the majority of it. And it is a reimbursement grant, so I have $147,000 in this current budget, which to get this many computers replaced is, is nothing. But I don't want to be in a situation again where I, I'm getting grant money that I can't reimburse. So I've put this money in to make sure that if we get every one of those grant dollars we've asked for, we can buy 150 desktops, 180 laptops, and 180 Chromebooks. That's going to change a lot in this district for our students and for our systems. You see what we're moving toward. It's 180 laptops and 180 Chromebooks because the goal is to put the technology in the students' hands in the classrooms. We're still going to fund the desktops, number one, because as I said, we have a lot of faculty and staff that need new computers. But also, we want to keep the computer labs running where they are. We need that for standardized testing, we need it for the way computer specials run in the elementary schools. We still need our labs, but the rest of what we're adding in will now be computers that we can use in classrooms for students. If we didn't need all 147,000 of that for the reimbursement, whatever's left, we'll continue to use for technology. Now I want to talk a little bit about facilities. I told you, this is how we did the process. What do you need? This is what was brought to me in facilities needs. Let me just give you the codes because there was so much up here, this was a hard one too. Get onto the screen. I know it's difficult to read. DW stands for district-wide. These were, these were things that we were going to try to do district-wide. MH is Monson House, and we've put all of that on hold as we try to determine what is happening with our location. But you see, everything, again, everything that's on here, the majority, if not all of these are things that are essential needs. But there's a lot of essential needs, so how did we, again, we had to prioritize. And I feel the need to show you this because I want you to understand how it became a district-wide goal, that we maintain these buildings properly, and why in a budget where we need so much for teaching and learning, I still have the money that I have for facilities. Historically, these are not proposed amounts, these are the actual amount of money that we have spent. When I say capital improvement and facilities maintenance, I don't mean no money was spent in '12, '13, that there was no cleaning fluids bought, there were no brooms purchased, there were no basics that you need to keep a building clean, but I do mean that that's all that was paid for. So capital improvement means we are taking the buildings where they are and maintaining them, doing improvements that will keep the building functioning well over time, and that we are maintaining them at a level that will keep them in good working order, especially as the buildings age. And that's the key thing to remember here. They're beautiful schools, they're all fairly new, but John Trumbull, for example, now the oldest school, is now 15 years old. It's time to make sure we do the maintenance that's necessary to keep them up. So all of those items were cut. Here's what made the list. The Energy Management Building Maintenance Service is a contracted preventative maintenance service for the HVAC systems in the buildings. These are intricate systems full of sensors and rooftop units and it's like having a boiler cleaned at home to make sure it works every year, except this is continually keeping an eye on the systems and making sure that they are functioning at the right level. So they're most efficient, the HVAC systems are running most efficiently, and also, we can spot problems ahead of time before they're very costly. Right now, we don't have a contracted service to do this. We do contract some preventative maintenance, but it's the minimum amount. It's making sure the filters and the belts get changed and, and the things are cleaned. These are keeping an eye on the entirety of the system and all of the electrical components and the sensors that go along with it. Sidewalk repairs, if you've been to John Trumbull, you know why we need sidewalk repairs. This has been moved off of the budget several years in a row. This is actually a shared service with the town, so we get a lot replaced there by working with the town and spending the money on the materials. And they are, we, at the beginning of this school year, the town worked with Mr. Santa Cola and I and did a great job trying to at least patch it and get it so that we could make it through this school year, but they need to be completely redone in the front. And we've already, we've already gotten on the town's schedule so that they can come when the weather warms up. Also, at John Trumbull, we need parking lot and playground asphalt repairs. That kind of is enough said. When kids fall on broken asphalt, we have a problem. Maintenance trailer replacement. We have two maintenance trailers that we use regularly. They're towed by the trucks, we put the lawnmowers on them and so on, between buildings and from garages to fields, for example. Both of those trailers have actually been deemed unsafe for road travel. Police department has told us they have blown the road, and DMV has said they should be taken off the road. I have to replace them. Furniture and equipment. This line item has been reduced to zero every year for the last five years. The problem with that is, again, we built beautiful new buildings, we put brand-new things into them, things happen because of wear and tear, one, and the building needs change. For example, you change the way certain classrooms are used and you, and you need desks that serve different purposes for students to work in groups and so on. And we've been making that happen through makeshift means. You go into some of our classrooms, you'll see we've bought folding tables to change the way things are set up, for example. We don't have a lot in this budget for this, it's very minimal, but I think we need to put something in there, again, to replace and keep the buildings up to date. The generator contract. There's a generator at the high school that goes on in case of power loss at the high school. It's an emergency generator, so we can't continually run school on it. If the power goes out, we still have to get the students out of the building because it only runs portions of the power, like any generator. However, this is also the generator that is used when the high school is used as a And we don't have a contracted service to perform the maintenance on it and to ensure that it's in good working order at all times. And the last thing I want to happen is, number one, for us to need it at the high school and it doesn't start. That's actually the best-case scenario because I can just put kids on buses and get them home sooner. The worst-case scenario is, the town comes to use the high school as a shelter and the generator isn't working, and it's in the middle of a storm. We have to put this contract into the budget to make sure that the preventative maintenance is done on that generator. Phone system contract. This is another example. In a business or in a school district, municipality, when you have as much tied up in phones lines as we do, you typically have a contract for them to be maintained. Because when they go down, you want the company there right away to do the service inside. This doesn't work like it does at home where you call AT&amp;T and they come whenever they come. Our phones are managed by the company that put them in. With no contract for maintenance on them, if the phone lines go down tomorrow at the high school, they'll come when we're next in the queue. They're not coming right then. And if they get here and they don't have parts because that system is one of the older ones, then they don't have parts. And they might have to order those parts from California or Japan or wherever they need to get them from, and they'll get here when they get here, and that's when the phones will be fixed. And we have actually had this happen. This isn't, I'm not putting this out as a, as a what-if and this crazy thing could happen. This happened while I was the principal at the high school, and it happened this year at Judson when the phones went down. When you have a service contract for the phones, when something happens, and it's technology, things happen. We're guaranteed two things. Number one, that they come like it's an emergency. And number two, that they will maintain all of the parts for our systems in stock. So no matter what they come and need, they can replace it. Mind you, this is at the schools, this is not at Monson, Monson House. Monson House is a completely different situation. Some of the parts we would need at Monson House, they won't find anywhere now. But at the school, but at the schools, we can still find them and keep them in stock. Medically fragile students, emergencies, we can't run schools when phones are down. And people say, well, then you have cell phones. If you've been in most of these schools, you know what I know. You don't have cellphone service in, in many areas. The high school is terrible for cellphone service, and so is John Trumbull. Some, just the, some of the other changes that are highlights. We have discontinued the activities fees in this budget. The activities fees were for students to participate in clubs and activities like the Leo Club, like the Interact Club, like the National Honor Society. And frankly, the board and I, the administrators, the teachers, everyone, I would say, philosophically disagree with charging students to do things that are community service-based or that they have earned the right to do, like National Honor Society. So we are going to lose that revenue. But that's part of me looking for the savings in other places. We're not putting the entirety of freshman sports back, but it's my hope that we're able to put at least these freshman sports back. And I can tell you why that is. It's, it's actually the majority of freshman sports because, you know, there was a misnomer there that people thought when freshman sports was cut from the budget, that meant no freshman could play sports. No, most of our freshmen still played whatever sports they wanted to play. They just didn't play on a, quote, freshman team. And in many cases, in most cases, that has been totally fine because we haven't had enough students to field a freshman team, for example, in soccer. In boys and girls soccer, that's not there to be reinstated because we don't have enough students playing to warrant a freshman team. We didn't before we made the cut, we still don't now after we made the cut. So it doesn't make sense to put that back. However, we expect moving forward that there will be enough students to play baseball. And we know we could field a team in boys and girls basketball, too. And I want to make clear again that our freshman students in this current school year really did not miss out by this cut. As I said, they wouldn't because no freshman was cut from a team just because they were freshmen. But what does happen is that in the upper grade levels, students, the freshmen who now can make it on a JV teams, make it on a JV teams and they play. And sometimes they even make it on a diversity teams, but there's still only a certain number of slots. So if they're making onto that JV or varsity team, somebody's, somebody else who's not a freshman doesn't have a spot. So what it means sometimes is actually, for example, it affects our 11th graders typically more than it does our 9th graders by the numbers we've seen. Because by the time they get to 11th grade, if they're not playing well enough to go to varsity and they're still on junior varsity, they can still play. But if a freshman comes along who is playing that sport better than that 11th grader, they get the spot and the 11th grader is now cut from the team. That's how we have seen this play out, which is what we said from the beginning. And lastly, you'll see tonight, at the end of this meeting, when I finally let all of you go home, we have an executive session with the board to discuss the specifics of this. This is collective bargaining, so I can't discuss the specifics at this point. What I can tell you is that I've been working for months on an early retirement package for our teachers. The union brought that to me as an option. Mrs. Brown and I did the math and figured out it does work to our favor. It in part works to our favor because even though we are giving people an incentive to retire and that has a cost associated with it, the flip side of that is, we are saving the difference in salary between some people who are at the absolute highest end and, and everyone who we are told is a possibility is at the top end of the pay scale, and replacing them not necessarily with the bottom steps because you can't always do that. I want to hire the best people. I don't want to hire people just because they're fresh out of school and they're going to save me money. And we did that even this year. So we've calculated these savings modestly for that reason. I haven't used the bottom step as the replacement. I've used a few up on the contract to give us some room to make sure I'm able to hire the best people. And I'll just give you an example of that. Math teachers are hard to come by. When they do come for a job, you're typically competing with a number of other districts for this one great candidate. And so it's fairly often that you are not paying a math teacher who comes at the bottom of the pay scale. You often have to push up that pay scale and give them a few steps up to get them to take the job. So we keep that in mind as we calculate our savings here. This is our estimated overall retirement savings. Part of it is in reduction of salary, the other part is in reduction of some positions. In other words, we will not necessarily replace every person that retires. And I can't say, again, I can't say more about that this evening because we need to have our agreement settled, but overall, that's how we come to these numbers. The other thing that this does for us is it takes away the wild card of retirement. When I do this, we're not going to have people pouring in all summer, turning in the retirement paperwork. They're going to retire, if they're planning to retire, they're going to retire now because otherwise they're leaving money on the table. And as part of the deal, and this is fairly public information, so this part I can say, the retirement paperwork is required to be turned in to be by March 1st. And the reason for that is, then I have a definitive number. We're no longer arranged. I have a definitive number, I know exactly what the savings is. And so our overall budget percentage may actually not go up, but reduce after this. And we need to know that before we are presenting it to the town council. So the deal is, I will know by March 1st who is retiring. Here's the part you all waited for, it took me this long to get to. We are at a 2.99 increase. Last year, the budget that was brought was a 5.1% increase. That was the budget that was approved by the board, that was the budget that was approved by the town council. Go back to the strategies we've used and you can see, we did what we said we did for this budget. This budget was built from the ground up or we would never be at 2.99% and still be able to try to do what we are doing, connecting these expenditures to our needs. It's still not everything we need, but that's the way of the world. This is about incremental change and incremental improvement, and that's the budget that I've brought to move us forward. Do we have any questions, Mr. Lambert?
The only thing I have, you know, this has been a battle for you, your staff. I really think you did a fantastic job bringing it to where it is right now, and quite frankly, I was shocked that you could get it down to there. So I think it's a good thing. I think everything, every single thing is needed, probably need more, but this is as bare bones, I think, as we can get, and very happy to see some of the things in there, especially on the facility side, counseling side, that we really desperately need. So thank you for that.
Thank you. One thing I, I'd like to say in response, Mr. Lambert, is that I also worked, I didn't mention this earlier and I should have, I worked closely with the town. First, Mr. Freegarm when he was still here, now with Mr. Skinnell, and very often with Mr. Nardelli. Mr. Nardelli and I have, and Mrs. Brown have had many talks along the way. They have been an invaluable source of information for us and assistance in this, and we really worked hard at bringing in a number that we thought was fiscally responsible and that...
and that the town would, and the taxpayers would see as something that was manageable. And that was the goal in coming in at the percentage that we did. And part of that was through my discussions with Mr. Skinnell and Mr. Nardelli.
Do the board members have questions?
Dr. Carnemola, could you just speak a little bit, going back to the facilities? We had talked in the past at facilities meetings and at the board meetings that some of the items that have been cut were deemed essential. Would you anticipate that some of those things will make it back into the budget in perhaps next year or the year after? Or what's the plan for those items?
Yes. Again, this is, we prioritized what do we think absolutely has to be done this year versus what can we maybe put off until next year? And actually, as I was going through, I noted two things that we actually decided to take off altogether at Polk. The fencing by the generator and the sidewalk by the gym. At this point, we have no plans on doing either of those things. And part of that was because even though that was originally requested, Mr. Senacola and I went out, surveyed those areas, talked to the people, talked to the administrators, and decided that those things were not actually essential.
Okay.
The rest, if we stay at Monson House, you can expect to see these items and certainly the items at the schools. For example, the replacement, excuse me, the roofing, there's roofing that needs to be done at John Trumbull that's not on here. We need to start planning for that. There are fencing repairs that need to be completed at John Trumbull, but we have patched it up, if you will, for the time being. We expect it to last for a little bit to try and save us the money in this budget. We are looking to put a maintenance storage building here at Swift. And again, that's a long-term cost savings because we need to have better places to put and store our equipment to keep it like new. But I had to take it from this budget. The field lighting control at the high school, we really need that. And in the long run, that will also save us money, but the money wasn't in this budget. The Bobcat utility vehicle, that we have in the budget for the high school because our plan was to move some of the equipment from the high school to Judson to make snow removal easier. Judson has an issue with snow removal and they really do need more equipment. But again, that was a tough, that was a tough last-minute cut, to be honest with you, because that is expensive equipment. And when we went through the priorities, we just couldn't do that this year. But moving forward, certainly, we need to do something and get some additional equipment up to Judson for snow removal.
Just a couple more questions. If we could go to the district social worker page. If I'm understanding you correctly, we're currently paying outside three days a week $77,000, but by bringing in the social worker, we're going to save $17,000.
And that's on the average because, yes, we're paying $77,000 for three days a week. And when a person comes in as a social worker, they typically are coming with an advanced degree, a master's in social work, and so they're not coming, again, they're not coming at the bottom of the pay scale. So we are assuming that we will be in the $60,000 range. I don't expect to pay more than that, is what I would say.
Okay, so it could potentially be more than a $17,000.
It could be more than $17,000. I tried to be conservative and leave us room.
Okay.
$60,000 would be the max I could see us paying for a social worker.
Okay. Thank you. And my last question relates to the Director of Educational Technology and Data Services. What's the salary range on that type of position?
This is, this is a tough one because I think we could be looking at anywhere from $70,000 a year to $105,000 a year. And I know no one wants to hear that, but I have to be honest. That's, that's the honest answer. It's 2015 and people that work in technology get paid to work in technology, especially to do the kind of implementation of educational technology that we are looking for them to do in the oversight of a system this large. And one of the other things I'll add into that is we have three LAN techs, local area network techs that work for us right now, and one of them is a lead tech. These are the hardware and software people. These people move computers, set computers up, install software on them, troubleshoot for the entire district, for six buildings, anything that goes wrong, anytime, everything to do with the website. And you can see how much, the website is another perfect example of why I need this position. When we had to make this migration from the old platform to the new platform over the summer, it was a nightmare. And we are still recovering from that. I was on the website today finding things that were wrong with it because that is not the job description or the, frankly, I don't have time to do it, the three LAN techs that I have. That is not part of what they do.
Okay.
Can I follow up with a question on that position?
Yes.
Sorry to listen. It sounds like this would be a member of your cabinet as well, the leadership team?
Well, I think we could go one way or the other with this. I'm not looking for a teacher. This is not someone that would be a teacher because I need a level of oversight here, too. I need them to work with the teachers, to implement the technology, to do some professional development. This person would work very closely with Ms. Parlato because it's hard to end with me. So that's what's kind of split in the nature of this position. When we're talking about the systems end, the data management and so on, that would be a lot on me to oversee that end of it, the website and so on. When we're talking about integrating the technology into the curriculum and instruction, that would be with Ms. Parlato. Which reminds me, in a perfect world, there'd be 20 more hours in a day and Ms. Parlato would do the whole thing all together. I'm catching heat for that one tomorrow. But, put it, it's on, it's on the list. But the other thing I forgot to mention, when we're talking about the need for technology and oversight, all of teacher evaluation is done online now also. That's another system that has been added into the fray. Bloom Board is a completely web-based system. That is what we record all of our teacher evaluation data in. And Janet oversees that and everything related to it on top of the rest. So this person and Janet would need to be very close.
Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
One, some of the things we want to do in technology and probably would happen, wouldn't you have to contract that out anyways? And that would cost you even more money.
Absolutely.
So I think the position is probably well warranted in that aspect, especially because of the things we want to do.
Yes, because if I don't, right. And if I don't put this position in, we will, we have spent some money already on the professional development end. And if you go line by line in this budget, you see that we've actually, for all of the work that we're doing with teachers, we are reducing the amount of money that we are spending on outside professional development. We've reduced it by almost 19% from the current, the year I'm in right now to the year moving forward. That's not because we're not going to do that work with our teachers. We are doing more and more. We're doing it more efficiently. We're using train-the-trainer models where we're learning, we're sending people to learn how to do something and then they're bringing that back to our schools. Janet does a lot of our professional development. Some of our professional development has also been done by grant funding from the state. We had coaching days that were given to us by the state. But implementing this technology without this person is going, yes, is going to require me to continue to outsource some of that professional development. And outsourcing nine times out of 10 is going to cost us 100% more than it would have done if we did it ourselves. And if you look, this was not a night where I stood and compared us to all of the other districts, all of the other dirgs. I think we all get that idea. I wanted to talk about Watertown and where we are and what we need. But I will say this. If you look, I couldn't find a district in the state that didn't have at least one person that did this job. Most of them had it split between two people. One person doing the data and one person doing the educational technology. Again, we are trying to do the best we can with what we're working with.
Board members have any additional questions?
I have one on the district social worker. Who's doing that work now? And are the people qualified?
Primarily, that work is done by our teachers and our administrators. Because when a student's in crisis, someone's helping them. I would say the majority of the time, it's our administrators. Sometimes it's, you know, it's our nurses in certain cases. If I happen to be in a building, sometimes it's me.
Board members have any further questions for Dr. Carnemola on the budget presentation?
I'd just like to thank you and your team and everybody who contribute to this. Like Tom was saying before, I think it's an extremely reasonable number and I appreciate a very informative presentation.
Okay, let me switch gears and finish, finish my superintendent's report. I don't have as many wonderful things to say about how I spent my last week. Number one, because you can see the last amount of work that went into preparing for this, this evening. And number two, because my second job has become making weather calls. I will definitely let you know when winter is over. I think I will be the first to know. But I did still sneak in a school visit here at Swift. It was a half-day because again, we were affected by the weather. Mrs. Crati and I attended a Lions Club meeting last night and both spoke to the Lions. We were invited to do that. That was a good evening. I had office hours at the Watertown Library last week, and I had office hours today with the community at the Oakville Library. I was also at the Senior Center last week for my pseudo, what I call my pseudo-office hours at the Senior Center. We had a retirement in our own office, Terri Lumia. She will be very much missed after 25 years of service. We lost her on Friday. We had a nice retirement party for Terri, and we have now replaced her, which left us with another opening to replace. And that is about as much excitement besides this budget as I have had in the past week. I want to remind people that tomorrow is a half-day for students. We are expecting some weather issues, but I don't, I don't believe that's going to result in a delay at school. Because if it did, even though we just finished making this a half-day, I would need to make it back to a full day. So I'm really hopeful that when I get up and get on the weather call at 4:00 a.m. tomorrow, I don't find out the storm is coming sooner than expected because it's supposed to be coming in the afternoon and we should be totally fine. I also would like to point out, we are at six days for snow. And by our approved calendar, that means we have three more before we start taking away from the April break. So after three more snow days, which we can hope we don't have, but be realists and think we might get close to that at least, we would start taking away from the April vacation and that would be from Friday of April vacation back. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carnemola, for your very thorough presentation on the proposed budget for the district for 2015, 2016. And in lieu of my chair report, I'd just like to make, to talk about two things very One thing that I've known since I've begun to work with you, we've had a short time together, but I think it's gone smoothly. And
It feels like a long time.
It does, it does. We're together a lot. Honestly, it's, it's been a learning experience for all of us. And with the transition in administration and at the Monson House, the task you had put afford, put in front of you was monumental. And what I can say to my fellow board members, when Dr. Carnemola talks about building a budget from the ground up, she means from the ground up and sometimes from underground and up, as her cabinet, fellow cabinet members can attest to. I'd like to draw your attention not only to thank Dr. Carnemola, but to thank business manager Jill Brown, to thank Janet Parlato, to thank Ray Senacola and Donna Rochester, your cabinet, your administrators, who have been working since October to get their building budgets ready for your review. I've been very impressed with the process and I think the board would agree with me that the process that you have brought forth to our district is something that we should implement going forward regardless of who's in these seats. It's, it's, we're very fortunate in your new process and I hope that you've put it all in writing for us.
Do you expect me to go somewhere?
In about, in about 50 years, in about 50 years. One of the questions that was asked of Dr. Carnemola last night by a Lions Club member was what does it take to keep a superintendent in Watertown? I wrote her answers down.
Oh, boy.
Because I wanted to make sure, one, that she was heard. But also, I think that that question speaks to a lot of things that we all have been feeling over the years. What does it take to keep a superintendent in Watertown? And I can assure you that through this budget process, I've been thinking a lot about that. So I want to thank you for your work. And on behalf of the entire board, I am very pleased to come in from a 6% increase with fixed costs and to get it down to 2.99% is something that we can all be very proud of. I'm very thankful for that. Moving to a second item I'd like to share publicly, I have four children. And what I've learned after having four children and many nieces and nephews and cousins with children, I don't give parenting advice. Every child that comes is a different child. You feel like you are a new parent all over again. But as a mother and as a board of education chair, I do want to share a public request that all of our parents in the community have another conversation, if not the first conversation, with their children in elementary school, in middle school, and high school in regards to social media. In particular, in particular, what they do on their phones, the apps that they are using, the type of access they have to those applications on their phones. I am now in sync with my children's phones so that every application that they have downloaded or that they are using is also on my phone. And I've taken the time to look at these applications and to see what can be done with them. And I would encourage everybody else to do that so we can limit some of the problems that we have and some of the problems that our students have in regards to their accessibility to social media, particularly on their cell phones. So with that, we will move to action items, of which we have none. Item M, future agenda items in board member comments. Do any board members wish to suggest future agenda items or have any comments they'd like to share this evening? Okay, seeing none, we've reached our second round of public participation. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board this evening? Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to item O. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy-related collective bargaining with the Watertown Education Association, specifically with regards to a proposed retirement incentive. Tending the executive session will be Josephine Cavallo Rosa, Don Arseni, Ray Nardella, Janelle Wilk, Vic Finzenzi, Kathy Rinaldi, Leslie Crati, Jill Brown, Dr. Carnemola, and myself, Tom Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.